And they know the one that was on South and, and the heart, they took it out from there. I don't know where it's been placed, but, um, I don't know. Just to see if you can follow up with that, please. South of Pearl?
South of Pearl?
I don't know.
Pearl, Pearl Street, right by Pearl and Washington. On Pearl Street at the corner of Pearl, by the apartment, 809.
809.
The Pearl and Washington.
Yeah. Uh, also, and I find a request that was made by the city clerk, it might be up on December 6th for that restored, that traffic light that was knocked down or whatever. And when I got the reply back-
Which is traffic light, is that?
On Grove and Vine Street, that you said that they put them up last week, whatever it was.
Well, when I went by there, there was one that was functioning there.
Right. Uh, this request was done by the city clerk, it might be up on December 6th. Subsequent, on December 14th, I had a reply, which I meant to reply back to them, wherever I brought this letter. And it said that it was apparently knocked down in a traffic accident years ago and never replaced. That this light was, was actually knocked down at the beginning of December, no, years ago. So this is for your knowledge, how much some people have information and what kind of disability they have, you know, an award. My sister, she almost passed away. If that traffic light was there, she would still be alive today because of that traffic light wasn't there years ago. But, as he says, it's not a traffic light, it's a flashing light.
Right, and it says, and it says it was never a functioning traffic light, the source before that, but a flashing red and yellow warning.
Right, that's what always was.
Which is what's there.
Right. And it was knocked down by, by a car. And they said that that light was never there, was never functioning for years ago, which it isn't so. So they don't know what they're talking about, that's what I'm trying to say. But at least, you know, you could read that. That's the kind of people sometime, you know, they just reply, either they reply because they're mad or they don't like somebody for whatever reason, you know what? Somebody else is even smarter, keep record to let them embarrass themselves, it's an egg on their face. I have nothing else to say.
Okay, Councilman Questa?
Pass.
Councilman Sardani?
I'm passing.
Councilman Jacobs?
Uh, Monsieur Todi.
Move in second.
Councilman Bowman, Kirkland, Agusti?
Here.
Councilman Questa?
Here.
Councilman Jacobs?
Here.
Councilman Grover?
Councilman Keenan?
Here.
Councilman Sedenio?
Here.
Councilman Gorman?
Councilman Mazza?
Here.
President, consult.
Here. This is a regular conference of the city council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Star Ledger and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Is there any taxpayer or resident present that would like to address city council at this time? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Another person from the city. Today is May Day.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody, other resident, taxpayer, that would like to address city council? Yes, so name and address.
Councilman, how you doing? Um, as Coca-Bongo Productions, we put an application for July 22nd to hold-
So your name and address for the record.
Edwin Gomez, through, to Style Street, Elizabeth, New Jersey. Um, as an organization that we've done events in the city in the past, we're putting an application for July 22nd for Columbia Independence Festival. Um, it will be held on Sunday, the 22nd, and I'm pretty sure there's another application for the week after, for another event. But, um, speaking to most of the merchants on Morris Avenue, um, they all are happy that there will be, that we're trying to put another event together for them, this way they could bring more business to the, to the area. And, uh, at the same time, celebrate our cultural event as we've done in the past nine years. So.
Thank you. That is on the agenda this evening, please. Is there any other resident, taxpayer, that would like to address city council that do so at this time? Seeing none, I throw the public speaking portion of the meeting. And we will move on to new business.
Okay, letter dated April 19, 2012, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to General Sales Administration, trading as major police supply, Pennville, New Jersey, for fixed automatic license plate recognition camera systems for the police department. For the period April 13, 2012, through June 30, 2013, and of course not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 19, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Sturtill, Tony, USA, Inc., a portable lift for the Department of Public Works Garage, at a cost of $42,682 under their state contract.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 26, 2012, from the Business Administrator advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist recommends the award of a contract to Doma Construction, North, New Jersey, for the demolition of 595 Monroe Avenue in the amount of $13,000, and with Novitech, Inc., Old Bridge, New Jersey, for the asbestos abatement in the amount of $3,500.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 26, 2012, from the Business Administrator advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist recommends the award of contract to Doma Construction, Inc., North, New Jersey, for the demolition of 597 Monroe Avenue, and with Novitech, Inc., Old Bridge, New Jersey, for the asbestos abatement in the amount of $3,500.
Any comments?
And the other one's $13,000.
Put it on.
Letter dated April 27, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing policy of insurance with James River Insurance Group, Richmond, Virginia, through the agent of record who is plumber associates covering professional liability for the engineer and staff, for the period of May 10, 2012, to May 10, 2013, at an annual premium of $21,996.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 27, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Industrial Commercial Cleaning Group, Camden, New Jersey, for the furnishing of graffiti removal for the Department of Planning and Community Development, for a period of two years from the date of award, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Any comments? Is this citywide, tell me, do you know?
I would take a check on it.
Letter dated April 30, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing the City of Elizabeth to become a member of the North Jersey Sustainable Communities Consortium, and further authorization for the proper city officials to sign all appropriate documents pertaining to the memorandum of understanding with the North Jersey Sustainable Communities Consortium, to work closely with the other members and the public, to create a comprehensive and balanced vision of the region's future, and to develop a plan that makes the region attractive to both public and private sector investment, that encourages residential and business growth in areas that can support growth and choose to do so. It is anticipated that the city will be eligible to receive annually for three years up to $20,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept and sign all appropriate documents to the County Union for Workforce Investment Act. Youth program funding in collaboration with the Elizabeth Development Company will work with local businesses to train, employ, and mentor youth from the city for summer employment in an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Any comments? I think this is a great thing, anytime that we can get funding to get our youth working and doing something positive, I think this is an excellent case. Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to reallocate CDBG year 36 funds in the total of $125,000 from the First Street Commercial Construction Project to Brand New Days Renaissance Apartments Project located at 170, 176 First Street, as it relates to the approved Elizabeth Court Neighborhood Revitalization Plan through the Department of Community Affairs.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to reallocate CDBG year 36 funds in the total of $15,000 from the First Street Commercial Construction Project to Elizabeth Works Project to launch a youth and young adult summer employment program geared primarily to the Elizabeth Court.
Again, this is another good thing for the youth, I would say, to do it more citywide.
Young adults.
Young adults, yeah, and youth. It'll be good to see any chance that this can be expanded, you know?
Wish. What can do, make every question.
Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider adopting an ordinance authorizing designating 720 North Avenue East as a redevelopment area, direct the planning board to review the draft redevelopment plan, adopt the redevelopment plan contingent upon the recommendations of the planning board.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2012 State Disco Year Budget by Budget Amendments, Chapter 159.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers to the 2012 State Disco Year Mutual and Sue Utility Budgets may be necessary.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated May 1, 2012, from Chief Financial Officer advising that the State Disco Year 2012 Appropriations Act requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits payments in the amount of $18,064.62.
Any comments? Since here there's a list.
Oh, you didn't get it?
But the list is not attached.
No, they'll, they'll be coming out with the resolution the next Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll get it, thank you.
Oh, well, this is the one that you'll get next week then.
You can maybe just give us a copy of it.
Okay.
Please.
You want to?
Yes.
You want to?
Yeah, yeah, send it around, it's not-
Not, but you know how to-
Yes, no.
Okay, you know how to-
Yeah, it's not.
You know, probably-
You can just pass it on to the councilperson.
Okay.
All right, we'll put it on, we will.
Letter dated April 23, 2012, from the Acting Director, Neighborhood Services, requesting permission to have a lien placed against the property situated at 414, 420 McGee Avenue for the demolition of said property in the amount of $17,275.
Any comments? Mr. President? Yes, Councilman Keenan? Here's the situation, where a bank is operating in our city, had a property that burned, represented a threat to the residents and the passengers by it. They took no action, no concern for the residents, were advised by the city on several times that they had to take steps to make the property safe. Did not do so. The city had to demolish the premises. And now, this organization was given 30 days to pay for the demolition, didn't do it, and now we're putting lien on the property. Since this outfit is related to a bank in the city, banks are designated as depositories for the City of Elizabeth. Is this bank one of the depositors?
Um, which one? Crown Room?
Crown, does it Crown? Crown. Are they a depository?
Sure.
So our City of Elizabeth funds are on deposit in this bank, and we may want to consider taking the funds out of that bank. It's unconscionable that they're not responsive to a public safety situation on the one hand, and on the other hand, they won't figure it out. Just to suggest, perhaps somebody could like to-
Yeah, we'll-
Councilman, look into that, I know the legality of that.
Um, also, this, this property is subject to pending litigation, so we may have to wait for that to be resolved.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, it would seem to me that the beneficiaries of the city's banking business, on the one hand, and on the other hand, they're totally unquiet. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Councilman? We, we have, all you need is five votes on this. Where, where the, we designate, we vote for it, so all you need to do is get five votes and you don't, they don't get the money?
We designate.
We designate, the city council designate. Someone makes the recommendation, do you make the recommendation, Tony? Who makes the recommendation?
Yeah, we'll look into it with the law department, see what the implications are and the entire details of the situation.
Yeah, particularly if there's a lawsuit and I think- Yeah, but I mean- But that doesn't have anything to do, I don't think that has anything to do with the fact that we can de-designate anyways. Mr. President? Yes, Councilman? So if the law department and Tony can look into this, if there's any way to de-designate them, I'd be very much supportive of doing it. It'll happen in the future, possibly with other banks, and somebody's going to be hurt. Well, they also own the property on Cherry Street, that's been a disaster for years. There was supposed to be a big condominium project, what, years ago?
Cherry and Union.
I don't know which, I forgot the street, I pass it all the time, but-
Same bank?
Yeah. He owned it.
The list.
The listing's the list.
Yeah, I think he wanted, wanted a, a tax abatement on condominium, on condominium apartments, and, and again- Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate you looking at it.
Yeah, look, it won't- Yeah, both do.
Yeah, can you pass that along?
Can you pass down the list, please?
Yeah.
Is that-
The clerk's office, yeah, she needs it back.
The other councilpersons would need to see it also.
Yeah, you can see it, yeah.
Oh, just looking to see it.
No, no, no.
Is that it? No, that's not it.
That's the list, that's the letter I got. Yes, this isn't it? How bad's the letter?
Is it the one?
There was three, it's only two.
Two, no, it was two. Two, yeah, I need it back.
Okay, we'll definitely look into that, and we'll put it on, thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Letter dated April 18, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development recommending awarding a contract to Harbor Consultants, Inc., to oversee environmental work on petroleum in the Midtown Redevelopment Area, and of course not to exceed $11,000 reimbursable under contractual terms.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 18, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development recommending awarding a contract to Harbor Consultants, Inc., to oversee environmental work on hazardous substances in the Midtown Redevelopment Area, and of course not to exceed $11,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 18, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting that your honorable body consider that there is a need for low-income housing in the City of Elizabeth. The proposed project involves the new construction of three apartment buildings, buildings containing a total of 52 units in the Elizabeth Court Neighborhood, consisting of a 40-unit building at 158, 168 First Street, and an eight-unit building at 20206 Third Street, and a four-unit building at 212 to 14 Third Street.
Any comments? And Councilman?
Mr. President, I would just like to know the sizes of the apartment in terms of the bedrooms. Are they going to be one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom dwelling, or even four bedroom dwelling? Because there's a great need in the city for long and moderate housing with multiple bedrooms for children and for other loved ones. So can we find out?
Say, go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, just that they have some type of form along in terms of the apartment sizes, really as it relates to the bedrooms.
Yes. Any other comments? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated April 24, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Virgil Service Group, Cranford, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the Design and Construction Administration of the 2012 Road Resurfacing Program Phase 1, at a cost not to exceed $88,970.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 25, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, attached here to, made part hereof, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $6,697.69.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 27, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Joseph Jingoli and Sons, Inc., Lawrenceville, New Jersey, to provide construction management services for the Elizabeth Avenue Streets Gate Phase 2, and of course not to exceed $67,730.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 30, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, advising that the Honorable Roman Montez, Judge Minnesota Court, signed an order authorizing the city to enter into the premises located at 856 Bailey Avenue, and remediate the dangerous conditions present on the exterior, exterior of the property. Also, is requesting permission to have a lien placed on the property for the removal and disposal of debris from said property on April 16, 2012, in the amount of $584.12.
Any comments? President? Yes, Councilman? I want to thank the Public Works Department for doing an outstanding job, as we have more and more foreclosures or situations where there are short sales in the city, more and more properties becoming efficient in terms of the upkeep, so that I think it's credit to the city that the Public Works Department's keeping firm in its office. Thank you very much. So this was a vacant property? Uh, I think it was a foreclosure. Foreclosure. Okay, any other comments? Oh, you would know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm happy to see this, I'm actually, I reside very close to this property, so I'm glad of it. I'm just bringing it here.
I'm sorry. Okay. Put it on.
Letter dated April 10, 2012, from the Police Director, on behalf of Flamingo Bakery, 120 Third Street, recommending the establishment of a loading zone on the north side of Livingston Street, beginning 61 feet west of Third Street and continuing 50 feet west thereof.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 25, 2012, from the Police Director, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept and sign all appropriate documents for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, FEMA fiscal year 12 court security grant program in the amount not to exceed $140,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated April 30, 2012, from the Police Director, requesting to establish handicap personalized parking spaces and deletions. Okay. For, Councilman Grover has okayed the two in First Ward, 420 Livingston Street, and 523 Franklin Street. Sixth Ward, 308 Spencer Street.
Yolanda, this particular premises has a driveway, which the owner uses, like, can you put an handicap in the front of a driveway? So, send it back to the police department, the double-check again, because I don't think the landlord will be okay.
Well, it says, "letter from landlord was submitting."
I understand. But I, I spoke to the landlord, and he told me that, you know, he wants to use this driveway. I said, "Well, did you write the letter? Did you make any recommendation or whatever?" The latter, if you read, I don't think it's very clear what he wants to do. So send it back to Mr., the Police Director, let him check it out, see what exactly he wants.
It does have a letter signed by apparently the owner as well as the tenant.
Right.
But he said they can't use the driveway?
That has no access to park this vehicle in the driveway. There's not more, enough space, enough space for more than one vehicle, so.
So, it says denied, right?
No, no, it's being approved. The landlord is indicating that that tenant does not have access to the driveway.
Right.
Not more than one vehicle fits. That's what the letter says.
So he has to park on the street, whereby, that's going to be can grant him the handicap parking?
You have it right there in your package.
Yeah, I, I read that, but I also spoke to the landlord.
Okay.
I remember coffee with him every day, he doesn't want the handicap to be placed in the front of his driveway.
It's not going to be in front of the driveway?
Where is it going to be?
It's going to be on, in the street. It's not going to be in front of his driveway?
No, no, just put him on old, we'll have to double-check, because that neighbor's talking, just said that we have no room to put him.
Oh, okay, but that's a different story, but it won't be in front of his driveway?
Won't, it's got to be in front of somebody else's driveway.
But it's going to be in front of his house.
No, there's no room. The property's only 25 foot.
And I don't know over here, but it says, "is to be installed along the east curb line of Spencer Street, beginning at a point 104 degrees south of Third Avenue, continuing 18 degrees south thereof." I'm not sure exactly whether that-
Diana, just put him on old, please.
I'll put it on old.
Will do. Mr. President, may I put a picture?
Sure.
Okay. Gentlemen, have a good day.
You too.
Good evening. 232 Christine, put him on, please.
Okay.
That's okay.
318 Amity?
Uh, put on old.
Okay. Just going to get it down. Okay, um, 641 First Avenue in the sixth ward has been disapproved.
Now, Mr. President, consistency, if, if 308, he would approve 308, even though, I mean, the landlord actually disagreed, he probably had a change of his heart or whatever. 641, sign will have to be placed in the front of 639 First Avenue. So, you cannot put him in the front of 641, but in front of 6, that's somebody else's property.
That's why it's disapproved.
Yeah, but it's not approved, it's disapproved.
Yeah, but there is, there's not consistency, which criteria does use when you approve a particular handicap or when we do not approve. So, I'll talk to the gentleman, anyway.
People with the traffic department.
Yeah, I will, thank you.
And then 564 Jefferson Avenue is disapproved, deletions, 29 Second Street, 553 Maple Avenue, and 807 Third Avenue.
Is that true?
Okay, letter received, April 18, 2012, from Coca-Bongo Productions, requesting permission to host the 9th Annual Columbia Independence Day Festival, Sunday, July 22, 2012, on the corner of Morris Avenue and Westfield Avenue to Julian Place and Union Street, from 12 noon to 9:00 PM, with the rain date scheduled for July 28, 2012.
Okay, any comments? And again, there's no conflict between, again, there was a request by the Morris Midtown Business Association for the 29th, rain dates August 5th and August 12th, and this request is July 22nd with a rain date of July 28th. There are no conflicts with those dates, but the only problem possibly is that they could be back-to-back dependent on if it's held on the 28th, Coca-Bongo, and the 29th, the Morris Midtown. And Councilman Sedenio, I don't know how the residents or businesses feel over there, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to discuss it with them?
Well, pretty much, like, I know that within the next couple of days, I want to gather more information, because I know how it's two festivals, just want to see the similarities of it, the variety of it, pretty much the polls when it comes to, like, the businesses and just how they feel, everyone feels in general. But that was going to be one of my questions, too, like, if, because I know that the Morris Avenue Business Association has submitted it a while ago, and I wasn't sure if there was a conflict when it comes to dates.
Yeah, I don't know if we've done something like that in the past, have two festivals back-to-back, and I don't know if you have, Councilman?
President? Um, yeah, actually, we have. Perhaps under the same umbrella, but, but sure, the best example would be the Elizabeth Avenue Festival. It's at least two days, back-to-back, so it has been done before.
The same organization, not two?
It's been the same organization, correct. But I mean, two different dates, yeah, yeah. Two different dates.
All right, so what is the pledge, Council? We'd like to have some time to look into this?
Oh, we could put it on the schedule. Oh, we could put it on the schedule, on the agenda, and then, if anything, we'll talk, like, you know, like, on that day, we decide and vote. I know, like, one of the things, I just want to make sure is that there's...
That's what I thought, I thought you just said you wanted some time to...
No, no, like, yeah, but, like, within the next couple of days, I could, yeah, I would be able to resolve it. I know, like, one of my greatest concerns is just wanting to, there be harmony, like, even though there's two festivals, which I think it's, I think it's great just to honor culture and everything like that, but I just want to make sure there's harmony between the two, if they could, you know, if both groups could respectfully support each other and allow each other to do what they have to do. I think that's, that's something really important, because personally, as a councilman, I wouldn't want there to be a lot of fighting, you know, a lot of, like, you know, in the process with that. So, harmony is the big thing, but I really don't have, like, any major red flags with it. So, that's why I think it's...
Other, any other, any other comments? Okay, great, Councilman Sedeno, we'll certainly look to you to the lead, given that you are the work councilman.
Thank you.
And certainly, whatever you would like, we certainly will support you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, put it on.
All right, the letter dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve, from Arcadis, U.S., Cranberry, New Jersey, requesting an encroachment permit to perform environmental work consisting of twelve soil boring and eight monitoring wells within the public right-of-way of Amboy Avenue, Bayway, Burlington Avenue, Crackout Street, South Bronx Street, and relocated Bayway.
Yes, no, I don't have no problem with this. This is an effort to move the New Goffles Bridge forward, and hopefully, we'll see it built in my lifetime. Any comments?
You're a young guy.
All right, we have a commendation that has been submitted for, I'm giving a name, Ms. Helen Davidson, who retired from the Elizabeth Board of Education, history teacher, thirty-six years of dedicated service.
Any comments?
Yeah, I don't have a problem in principle with this, but I happen to know who she is, but we, this is something we're normally going to do, or we request, require more information, we, because when we give a commendation, the city council, like, one of us, for example, recommends someone, we explain why.
Right.
You know, I want to commend Joe Keenan for his outstanding service to the community and blah, blah, and I, I have personal knowledge. So, this is, this is a request from whom? The daughter?
Yes, I believe, I really, I'm assuming, which I should not do, but the call came in and Councilwoman was asked for, to be given this, so...
Well, if Councilwoman Procasagosto is making the recommendation, that's a totally different story.
Yeah.
Like, for example...
She spoke, Ms. Durham, or Ms. Durham, spoke to the Councilwoman.
For example, I'm wondering, I'm wondering, Yolanda, if this is the teacher from Cleveland, Helen Davidson, whom I know well. I mean, it's a very common name.
I don't know.
I know, I know at least one more teacher with the same name. This is the person.
Yeah, I don't know. They faxed it over to...
I mean, I don't have any objections, but I hope I, when I say things like this, sometimes I get in trouble.
But we are expecting more information.
I didn't want to make you run the lead. If it's Helen Davidson I know, I support it a hundred percent.
Mr. President?
You know what I mean?
No, I agree with Council, yeah, question, but you can't have residents on their own submitting recommendations. So, this should have sponsorship by a councilperson.
Right.
So, if Councilwoman is, is...
Right. It was sent, it was faxed to her.
Right, and if this is her commendation, I'm supporting it.
Right.
But I agree with that, because you can't go down that road.
Yeah, it's a subtle point, I just want to make sure everybody's on their point.
It's not that subtle a point, because the point is, then you'll have everybody...
Right.
Usually, sometimes that's how it works. People will send their request for a commendation into your office, and then it's forward to a councilperson to make that decision.
That's fine.
Okay?
That's fine, that's good, yeah.
As long as we're clear with that, that it should come through a councilperson.
Right.
Any commendations, just as more, as well, should be through a councilperson.
Mr. President, I don't, I don't want to, I just want to reiterate my point, if Councilwoman Procasagosto is making these recommendations, I support this a hundred percent. And if it's a teacher that I knew in Cleveland for many years, by all means, I support this. I just want to make, make that one clear.
Absolutely, and I'm reiterating that point.
Okay, all right.
Okay, okay, great. Put it on.
Okay, letter dated April twenty-third, two thousand twelve, from the City Treasurer, submitting the Treasury's report of receipts and dispersments for the month of January two thousand twelve, and statement of bank balances and investments as of January thirty-one, two thousand twelve.
Any comments?
I gave my thanks.
Put it on.
Okay, now we need to go into closed session.
Yeah, let me read the resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, P. Period L. Period nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney's client privilege, minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of people above no longer requires that confidentiality, then minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
And a motion to go into a closed session.
So, move it, Mr. President.
Move in second, throw call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Jackus?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedeno?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Gonzaga?
Aye.
They had a family move, they had an autistic child, we put up autistic signs and things like that. I don't think they're living there anymore, but they go against it, so we can remove the handicap as well, the child signs. I appreciate it. Councilman Keenan?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Maza?
Yeah, I, I have a request to put a speed zone or...